Uh, we will now resume our city council meeting. And so we are at the consent calendar. And so I'd like to go ahead and see if we have approval of the consent calendar minus item one C.
And then you can vote.
I say yes.
Councilmember Barron, I second.
We have a motion and we have a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Yes, the motion was made by councilmember Snow with a second by councilmember LeBaron. Roll call. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron?
Aye.
Councilmember Council, absent. Mayor Protam Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Duskin?
Aye.
Motion carried on the vote of four, zero, one.
Thank you. Item number two is the partial vacation of an open space easement at seven zero one five Lermas Court. And I'll check in with our city clerk to see if all the notices required by law have those been given? And if the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents have those been provided?
Madam Mayor, all notices as required by law have been given and the complete set of exhibits, correspondence, and other documents have been provided and are on file with the city clerk's office.
Uh, thank you. Now it's time to ask if any of the council members have disclosures or conflicts of interest related to this particular item. Because one of our councilmembers stepped away from the platform, um, what I'll do is I'll, I'll check with our current councilmember that we have here. If she's not back, then we will have to take another break. So I'll, I'll turn it over to our, um, city attorney.
I'm sorry, you can proceed with the item for the public hearing. Um, but when she returns, we'll do disclosures and conflicts of interest if needed.
And will that be, um, in the op- in the public hearing portion or will, because right now it's before the public hearing portion of the meeting.
We will go directly into the public hearing portion of the meeting. When she returns, we'll ask the question immediately to ensure that she has disclosed any conflicts of interest or exported communications regarding the public hearing item.
So then we will hold on, um, the disclosures, um, and we'll go directly into the public hearing?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. The three on the dais right now can move forward with conflicts of interest and exportate communications and disclosures. When councilmember LeBaron returns, she can provide her, uh, her disclosures if any.
Uh, thank you. And so I'll turn it over, um, to you to, uh, see if we have any conflicts of interest or any disclosures to make a bearing this particular public hearing.
Thank you so much. So I would just start with councilmember Snow, um, for any conflicts of interest or exportate communications regarding the public hearing tonight.
No conflicts of interest or no exportate communications to report, she can.
Thank you. Count, um, sorry, Mayor Protam, uh, Mendoza?
I have none to report.
Madam Mayor?
I have none to report.
Thank you so much. So I suggest we proceed and right when councilmember LeBaron returns, we will have her give her, uh, disclosures as well.
Uh, thank you. And so I'll, um, turn this over to Izzy Merquian, who is our public board's director, uh, to present the staff report. Um, we will now open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's public hearing is a recommendation to adopt a resolution partially vacating an open space easement located at seven zero one five Lermas Court. Seven zero one five Lermas Court is a vacant lot in a single-family owned subdivision located to the west of Berry Street, south of Mount Vernon. A single-family residence is proposed to be constructed on the site. On October tenth, twenty twenty-three, the property owners of the vacant lot applied to vacate an open space easement to expand the developable area. Developable, developable, sorry, excuse me.
Mr. Merquian, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Merquian, could you pause for just a moment?
Certainly.
Uh, councilmember LeBaron has returned to the dais. I just want to make sure that you give any disclosures regarding conflicts of interest or exportate communications regarding this public hearing.
I have nothing to report. We can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, on October tenth, twenty twenty-three, the property owners of the vacant, vacant lot applied, uh, to vacate the open spe- easement, uh, to develop the property into a single-family home. Next slide please. You can go, ma'am. So I apologize for the, uh, brightness of the image here. Uh, so there is an open space easement, uh, that was dedicated as part of parcel map one nine four. So mine, one nine four seven seven, which was approved on April twelfth, two thousand and four. The open space easement is approximately three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. And resides on the westerny edge of the parcel. So, uh, it's difficult to see, but Berry Street, uh, runs, uh, north to south. Lermas Court runs east to west. And, uh, there is a cul-de-sac, uh, at the end of Lermas Court. The property in question here is on the south side of the cul-de-sac. Again, it's a vacant lot. The open space easement, uh, that is part of this item this evening is on the westerny edge of the property. Uh, it runs about, uh, ninety-two to ninety-four feet, uh, on, ninety-two feet on the west side and then ninety-four feet on the east side. And its width is approximately thirty-five feet. City engineering staff refused this seminal application and concluded the entire easement cannot be vacated due to the likelihood that a portion of the easement might be susceptible to flooding and should remain as open space. The purpose, the purpose of tonight's item seeks to reduce the open space easement from three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet to approximately nine hundred and forty-four square. Uh, which in essence means reducing the, the easement width from thirty-five feet to ten feet. Uh, this would allow the property owner to move forward with an application to construct a single-family residence and an accessory dwelling unit. Next slide please. So this image here, um, provides a better image of, of the item for you this evening. Uh, so this is the open space easement. Uh, currently it's thirty-five feet. The view that you're seeing here would be as if you were looking down the barrel of, of, uh, the, the channel. Um, the proposed easement is, is, uh, suggested to be reduced from thirty-five feet to ten feet. And so this is what it would be, uh, if the item's approved this evening. So it would go from thirty-five feet to ten feet. Uh, allowing this space here to be, uh, developed by the property owners. As part of the analysis and determining the, the vacation of the easement, the hydrology study was, uh, completed and required, uh, by the property owners. Uh, and the analysis determined that the revised length, uh, and, uh, width of the new proposed easement, uh, is sufficient to handle the runoff caused by the development, uh, of this property and both at a ten-year and a hundred-year storm event. And the hydrology study, uh, had noted here, both at a ten-year and a hundred-year event, indicates that at a hundred-year event, uh, there would be water approximately five, uh, and a half feet, uh, wide at half a foot deep. So you can see with the revised, uh, open space easement, there is sufficient capacity, uh, to handle any additional waters, uh, from this development. As such, staff concluded that the partial vacation of the open space easement at seven zero one five Lermas Court is reasonable and recommends that the city council adopts a resolution approving the partial vacation of the open space easement. Next slide please. And so staff's recommending that the council adopt a resolution. I believe the property owners of, uh, the vacant site are here this evening. I'm not sure if they're, if they wanted to speak. They did see them in the crowd. Uh, with that, that concludes staff's recommendation. I'm happy to answer the questions that the council may have.
I thank you so very much. Before we, um, get to council questions, I'll check with our city clerk to see if we have any speaker slips regarding this particular item. And, um, we do not have any speaker slips regarding this item. And so I will turn to the city council members. You will have the option of asking to question. Um, I'll start with, uh, councilmember Snow.
Um, I think that we adopt a resolution partially vacating the open space easement at seven zero one five Lermas Court.
Um, before we get to a motion, um, for this particular item, we actually have to have a motion to close the public hearing and then proceed with, um, uh, the item. And so I do want to provide an opportunity for councilmembers to ask questions if they do have questions. Uh, if you do not have any questions at this time, I will, uh, proceed to councilmember LeBaron, followed by Mariposa Mendoza. I will have, uh, maximum two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are we going to be hearing from the property owner? Are they here? Are you going to speak?
Yeah, I'm here.
Perfect. Let's hear from them.
Uh, well, we, we just want to move into the, to this, uh,
I'm so sorry, um, if you would like to speak, if you would like to speak regarding this particular agenda item or if anyone would like to speak regarding this particular agenda item, please submit a speaker slip. Because you are at the podium, you can go ahead and speak, but, uh, once you're done, you'll have three minutes. Once you're done, um, then if you can fill out a speaker slip, uh, for record retention, that would be great. And so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
And if you can speak directly into the mic, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my name is Larry Delacruz. I'm the, uh, and I'm here with my wife, uh, Rose. She's there, uh, at the end. And, uh, we're the property owners of seven zero one five Lermas Court. And, uh, uh, actually, this is our first time attending a city council meeting, so, uh, we don't really know what to expect. Uh, so we didn't, uh, fill in, uh, those slips. So I'm, I apologize for that. But thank you also for allowing me to speak. And, uh, I just want to, uh, say that, uh, I just want to, uh, be part of this community. That's why we bought the property and we want to, uh, establish our residency at Lermas Court. And I hope that, uh, you approve our petition to, uh, vacate the easement. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. And if we can, I just have one of those speaker slips and I turn it over to our city clerk. If you can fill that speaker slip out. I'll be checking with their clerk to make sure that we do not have any additional speaker slips regarding this particular item.
Madam Mayor, we have no speaker slips for this item.
Now we will proceed, uh, with questions. And so I'll turn it over, uh, to councilmember LeBaron. Uh, you have your questions. Thank you.
This property is at the very bottom of the street. And then there's a, this question's for you. There's a storm drain easement in the back. Is that, or what's the situation in the back of the property? There's a canal where the whole community's water drains down this thing. I mean, we couldn't really see on the slide any photo.
It's a, it's an open space easement, uh, and it's a open space ear- area. I don't, I don't want to say channel. There is not a channel, but, it serves this property and the property east of the north. So, answer your question. My knowledge is only those two properties.
Does water flow down that when it rains? Is that intended, is that?
Correct. So the open space easement is intended to, uh, serve the water that's coming off, uh, those properties. So the property that all its driveway, um, any hard surface areas on the property, they all, they all drain to the back of the property. That's what the organization does for all.
Can I, can I, um, also add to what Izzy is talking about? In the staff report, there is an attachment that has the parcel map and the parcel map includes the drainage. Um, and there's about, there, there is a drainage easement on the parcel. It is, it does take up a portion of where the open space easement exists, but it's a small portion where the,
And it's between the, the properties, right?
That's correct. So there is a drainage easement there, but it doesn't encompass the entire open space easement. I hope that helps.
Thank you. I thank you so very much. Uh, next, please, Mariposa Mendoza.
I, I have, if anybody wants to see it. Um, so yes, I, there is an existing easement at the back of the property. Who's, uh, maybe this is not obvious or it's obvious to other people, but is the easement granted?
The city.
The city, okay. I just want to make sure. So we're just reducing the size of an easement that the city already had?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the, the drainage eas- easement is, um, is, well, there's a private sewer easement at, on the south side of the property. And then a drain, the drainage easement, is that also, um, an easement to the city or is that easement, is that a private?
So that, the drainage easement is dedicated to the city.
To the city, okay. And then it's on a private road. Okay. All right. Now I just wanted to try to follow that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, I did get one more speaker slip, um, for this particular agenda item. Um, normally we take all of the speaker slips together, uh, but I will make an exception for this one tonight. So if you want to speak on the, um, uh, forthcoming agenda items and you have not turned in your speaker slip now, please do so. Uh, that way you are in the queue to speak on behalf of that particular agenda item. I'll turn this over to Keith Eber. I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name.
Can you put her name in the V real quick?
If he can speak directly into the mic.
Hold it.
Um, quickly, uh, the public notice, uh, really lacks in the type of public notice.
Oh, we're actually recording the comments that are shared. Uh, and so we need to have people speaking to the mics and that way it's properly recorded. Uh, so we just changed the mic and we will now, uh, provide three minutes for you to, um, to speak.
Thank you. Um, I just realized that this, uh, happened by walking down my street and some put us a public notice flying around. Um, I think this is a negative thing for a public notice, uh, for the community of Lummy Grove and the community of, um, Peppermint Lane, which I live on. So I think that's, that's the first, uh, problem here. The second problem is that it doesn't show any of the adjacent properties. This, uh, easement goes through at least thirty-plus properties, uh, and development. I am pro-development, but, uh, I think that the city hasn't even looked at what, what impacts that this may cause later on. Uh, if you just look at Google Earth, this easement goes through, I already said thirty plus properties. We have grading issues. We have, um, not only that, but, uh, the Healy's Water District has easement there as well. So it's not just, uh, moving that setback for a more developed area. There's huge impacts to not only the adjacent properties, but thirty-plus properties throughout that whole easement.
Thank you so much. Uh, I'll turn it over to, um, Izzy Merquian, uh, to address, um, the public notice concerns and also the additional comments that were provided regarding this, uh, particular project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, with regards to the noticing requirements, uh, we posted a notice in the Californian, uh, two weeks prior to the meeting, which ran two weeks consecutively. And then we placed the notice on Berry Street and Lermas Court, uh, another notice halfway down Lermas Court. And, uh, as the speaker just mentioned, another notice on Peppermint, Peppermint Lane. Uh, the notice was, uh, centering the public notice that appeared in the local paper, uh, taped onto an A-frame, uh, for any classified.
I thank you so very much. And now we will go back to, uh, questions from, uh, city council. I will just complete one round of questioning. Um, we will, uh, do a second round of questions and I'll start with, um, councilmember Snow. You have two questions.
Are there grading issues? The, the last folks said that there were grading issues with, uh, properties. Can you tell me if this impacts those, is it, is all this impacting the, or this would easement?
So the easement in question, uh, this evening is just an open space easement. There is no, um, my understanding, uh, any other utilities of running between the two, two properties. So no.
And then just, just for everybody who's at a vacation, can you explain what an open space easement is?
It's undeveloped plan.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Okay, so I'm actually very happy that when we do these public hearings, we're able to hear from, we're, we're able to hear from the public basically because that helps inform us to move forward and making a decision on what questions we're going to ask. And actually being that we have this whole two-question rule, I'm typically walking on H of those two. How am I going to fact find in this meeting without asking one and two questions? That's quite a difficult task. I was gonna ask, is this the Peppermint Street on the other side of this because of my institutional knowledge from living, having been a born and raised Lummy Grover? I do, I thought, I thought that there was Peppermint Lane right behind the street. So Lermas goes down, it declines. This property in question is at the bottom of Lermas Court, here at the bottom, and then here on the other side is Peppermint. So essentially this is, the land goes like this. So right here in the middle is where there's this canal. I seen it because we walked back from campaigning, going door to door to this open space. I've seen that there's, as it goes down, assuming that that's where all the water is coming. Our community goes into this whole, uh, being area. And as Mr. Keith Edner just mentions, yes, I actually have a couple messages right here. There are houses and we have a lot in the back of this Lermas Court. All the water from over there goes down. So then being the storm drains are such an issue. My question is, if we're allowing, right, we're vacating this open space so that Mr. Dela Cruz can build a home and a new, that's wonderful, that's fabulous, that's a great idea. Allow, like, is there going to be proper, are we requiring that there be drainage? How would this all gonna work? Is this little neighborhood going to be drained properly? I don't, I would, don't want any issues to arise. Now this gentleman, Mr. Edner is mentioning that there's grading issues and that there's thirty-plus homes that all the runoff water goes down this little way right here. I want to avoid issues. Have we looked at the long-term effects of allowing this easement to be built in the back? I'm not one, but you do like one.
Can you, can you clarify your question?
Yeah. Have we looked at what we're gonna do with this, where the water's flowing behind this property?
Yes.
Okay, what's the plan?
A hydrology study that was required as part of the application, uh, determined that the current facilities can handle a hundred-year storm event. And this street actually serves four homes currently.
Lermas.
Lermas Court. No, not thirty, but four homes. And the open space easement begins at, um, the, it begins at the property to the north of this property in question. There's one home, one residence to the north, and that's where the open space easement begins. So it's not serving any, um, how should I say it? It's not taking any water from, you know, the Pe- Peppermint Lane, for example. Um, Peppermint Lane has a private road that serves about, uh, a handful of units, houses. Um, and so presumably, uh, water from that private road is coming down this easement. But it's not thirty homes. That's, that's correct.
Well, what you're saying is basically along, Mr. Edner needs to build his own, and maybe he will have to set back.
That's correct.
Mariposa Mendoza?
Yeah, I, I, I have no further questions. Um, I read the staff report pretty closely of, of the meeting and I already had it up on Google Earth. So I, I knew exactly where this was and, um, that Peppermint, Peppermint Lane is where it's been. So, um, I did quite a bit of research.
Thank you so very much. And, um, I do not have any questions at this time. Um, so I'll just check with staff real quick before we close the public hearing to see if we have any additional comments. And then we will move forward to deliberations.
No further comments, Madam Mayor.
Uh, thank you. And so it is now time to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Um, I think that we close the public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Gastel, absent. Mayor Protem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on the vote of four zero one.
Uh, thank you so very much. And now it's time for council deliberations. And we will have two rounds of questions that the council can ask the staff for our policy. I will start with the first round, followed by the second round. And then I will be seeking a motion, starting with Councilmember Snow.
I move to adopt a resolution partially vacating an open space easement at seventy fifteen Lermus Court.
Uh, thank you very much. And I'll move on to Councilmember LeBaron.
I'll second that.
Uh, we actually have a motion in a second. I'll check with Mayor Protem Mendoza to see if you have any additional questions or comments.
No.
Uh, at this time, we do not have any additional questions or comments. Therefore, we will forego the second round of questions and move directly into our process for approval of this item. And so I will turn this over to our city clerk.
Motion was made by Councilmember Snow to approve staff's recommendation for the second by Councilmember LeBaron. Go call those. Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Gastel, absent. Mayor Protem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on the vote of four zero one.
Thank you. Before we move on to item number three, I want to do a check regarding item number one C and number four. Those are actually part of our business that we do here. And to see if City Council would like to move those items to the next City Council meeting, which will take place on March nineteenth. Taking into consideration that right now, we have thirty-six speaker slots at three minutes per speaker for item number three. And that means that we would have two hours of public comment regarding item number three. So I just want to check regarding our business items, which are items one C and item four on this agenda.
I'm okay with changing this to item C. And I'm wondering, could we have, we had this before, we had yesterday, public comment, could we reduce the amount of time to two minutes per speaker?
Uh, that is a possibility. Thank you so much for sharing those comments. And I just want to check regarding those two items, items one C and item number four, and then a reduction in the amount of time that the speakers will have for item number three to speak during the public comment portion of that item, item number three. Uh, Councilmember LeBaron?
I agree with putting off item number one C and item number four. And that's what we think it was fine to speak at seven o'clock.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so there's a proposal to reduce the speaker time to two minutes. There's also a proposal to maintain the current time limit for speakers, the three minutes for items number three. We do have two people who are, two councilmembers who are in agreement to move item one C and item four to the March nineteenth City Council meeting. Those are our business items. And so if we have a motion to do so for those two in a second, we can call the roll on that and then move on to item number three.
I move to move items one C and four to the next council meeting.
So we have a motion in a second. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Snow?
Aye.
Councilmember LeBaron?
Councilmember LeBaron, aye.
Councilmember Gastel, absent. Mayor Protem Mendoza?
Aye.
Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Motion carries on the vote of four zero one.
Uh, thank you so very much. And we're moving on to item number three, which is the council-initiated item, it's a council-initiated item to discuss and adopt a resolution calling for a ceasefire and immediate peaceful resolution. Uh, this item was initiated by Councilmember Snow and Mayor Protem Mendoza. Uh, Councilmember Snow will begin the discussion, but before we begin the discussion, I just want to check our temperature regarding the amount of time that speakers will have to speak. Um, it was recommended that we reduce the time to two minutes, um, but also comments provided that we should maintain the three minutes. And so I just wanted to look to see, as this is a council-initiated agenda item that was brought to us by Councilmember Snow, what is your intention?
I'm happy to let people have the three minutes, just if people can use the same, if they want to be here. Um, but yeah, if people want to be successful, they have support.
Uh, thank you so very much. Before we start with this particular agenda item, I want to discuss the importance of the quorum. Because this is an opportunity to hear what everyone has to say. And so I am asking that you maintain silence and that you do not clap because we want to make sure that we can hear everything that everyone has to say tonight. Um, you know, the quorum and respect for individual voices. And I just want to let you know that we are here to hear what you have to say. Uh, I will turn this over to Councilmember Snow to begin this particular item.
So I'm gonna keep my comments brief because I have no voice. Um, but the reason I got into politics at all was because in twenty nineteen, uh, I was sitting watching George Floyd scream out very small. And that was a call out to all the moms in the community. We can't watch other kids be slaughtered. We can't watch other kids be murdered. Um, and it's not enough to just sit still and stand by. We have to stand up. And so after listening to public comment at the last meeting, um, also just from being a member of this community, Lemon Grove is an extremely diverse community. We have Jewish people here. We have all kinds of Arabs here. Um, we have all kinds of Muslims here. And we have people of all faiths here. It's a really diverse community. Uh, and Lemon Grove has been a leader. Uh, in the past, we had the Lemon Grove incident and people stood up for their rights and stood up for doing what's right. And I think that that's why it's so important for the Lemon Grove Council to share their voice and support. There's not a lot we can do. I can't go up there and I can't annihilate a bomb that's coming through. That's not within my capabilities. But what is within my capability is the power to use my voice, and voices are powerful. We'll listen to yours today. We'll listen to everything that you have to say. The reason why they're so powerful is finally people are starting to listen. Uh, our Vice President of the United States just called for a ceasefire. That's the first time anyone of significant importance in the Biden administration has led that request for a ceasefire. They're finally starting to listen. And you're looking up here at a council that is made up of moms. And if, there's a reason why this council is one of the first councils to hear this is because we care. We care deeply about what's going on, not just to our own children, but to children in Gaza, in Israel, throughout the, throughout the United States and internationally. And so that's why we've decided to bring this resolution before you. Uh, we are not taking sides. There are no sides because your kids. Uh, but what I am saying is that we've got to protect everybody's kids. I hear reports on the news that they're, they're saying, you know, many children have died, but everybody's somebody's child. And so I really want to make sure that our voice goes out there into the universe and they hear us loud that we need a ceasefire now. We need all hostages released. And so we've provided a resolution that does that. So I'll turn the, um, respectfully, and my portion of the comment here and have Jennifer Mendoza read the proposed resolution. Um, and then we've made one revision that I will suggest and if, uh, City Manager could hand out the revised version. It's a revision, if you have it with, one, two, three, four. Whereas, um, it says resulting in the deaths of nearly thirty thousand predominantly innocent Palestinians. We don't believe we know what's changed there.
Over a hundred thousand.
With that, I'll have Jennifer Mendoza read out this revised revision.
Whereas, the city of Lemon Grove pursues a responsibility to uphold the values of inclusion, diversity, and equity. And whereas, the ongoing conflict in the Middle East has resulted in the tragic loss of many thousands of innocent civilian, Israeli, and Palestinian lives, and increasing reports of anti-Semitic, Islamophobic, anti-Jewish, anti-Palestinian, and anti-Arab incidents. And whereas, on October seventh, twenty twenty-three, Hamas launched a terrorist attack, causing the deaths of over twelve hundred Israelis and capture, and the capture of innocent civilians as hostages. Whereas, in response, the state of Israel has engaged in a bombing campaign targeting Hamas terrorists operating within civilian populations, including hospitals, schools, et cetera, of the Gaza Strip, resulting in the deaths of nearly thirty thousand predominantly innocent Palestinians, damage to eighty-five percent of the infrastructure, and the displacement of one point nine million Palestinians. And whereas, many of our community members have suffered from alarming rise in anti-Semitism and Islamophobia. And whereas, the city of Lemon Grove stands firmly on the foundations of peace, unity, respect, understanding, and the universal value and preciousness of all lives. And whereas, the city of Lemon Grove as a local government organization can contribute to the collective efforts of a global society to promote a culture of peace, understanding, and cooperation, creating a ripple effect that extends beyond local borders. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lemon Grove, as follows. Section one, the City Council of the City, well, I don't need to rephrase. No, I'm not gonna, we'll read that. Um, I'm gonna reserve any comments until after we hear from the public.
Uh, thank you so very much. And so we now have thirty-nine speaker slots there. And I'll, we will now proceed with the public comment portion of this particular item. Please note that the public comment portion of this item is now closed. That will not be accepting any more speaker slots. I'll start with Mezhron Ashan, followed by Ari, Ariyan, Orion Belfer. I apologize in advance if I mispronounced her name.
Good evening. Good evening. Honorable Madam Mayor Vasquez, Mayor Protem Mendoza, Councilmember Snow, Councilmember LeBaron, City Manager, and fellow community members. We are all praying for the Councilmember Gastel. I hope he has a speedy recovery. My name is Mezhron Ashan, and I'm Executive Director and Co-Founder of Borderlands Fraternity, a pro bono civil rights nonprofit based right here in East County and serving the whole of San Diego County. We are committed over the past four years to representing those who have been discriminated against on the basis of ethnicity, gender, race, religion, and sexual orientation. Many of whom have lived right here in Lemon Grove. We stand with our Jewish Voice for Peace, Veterans for Peace, and many of our other siblings and solidarity in this moment. It has been a hundred and fifty days of the unimaginable happenings to our Gaza siblings. In the name of American citizens, a hundred and fifty days of watching in real time on social media as innocent women, men, and children are being bombarded, driven out of their homes, and denied basic humanitarian needs, and food, and now facing starvation. A hundred and fifty days of watching over one point two million dollars of Lemon Grove taxpayer luddies that could have gone to infrastructure, potholes, education, flood damage, the Lemon Grove Fire Department to house our houseless siblings, aid our mental health crisis, feed our seniors and elders, provide mutual aid, and help uplift our local communities. We thank you, Lemon Grove, and the City Council, from the bottom of our broken hearts for having the courage to finally publicly call for a ceasefire in Gaza. For far too long, our so-called leadership has failed to address this for what it truly is, a horrific mass ethnic cleansing that has led to horrific genocide. And when we were taught never again, we meant it. This issue is being led by Lemon Grove, like Lemon Grove has led desegregation and so many other things that have affected the rest of our nation. The Gaza, the genocide in Gaza is an environmental issue. It's an Islamophobia issue. It's an anti-Semitism issue. It's a xenophobia issue. It's an anti-black issue. It's a queer issue. It's an anti-war in the Middle East issue. This is a labor issue. This is a white supremacist issue. This is a refugee issue. And this is a poverty and marginalized people issue, but most importantly, this is a basic human rights issue. We urge you to pass this ceasefire resolution and thank you for helping us make history tonight. Good job.
I thank you so very much. And the next person is Erin Belfer, followed by Spencer Levine.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Vasquez, honorable City Council members. My name is Erin Belfer, and I'm a Lemon Grovean. I moved here two years ago this April from after twenty years in the college area. I'm very proud, especially proud tonight. I'm a longtime activist for racial and social justice. I'm a Jewish woman, a member of Jewish Voice for Peace, and a supporter of the Palestinian and Muslim communities here in Lemon Grove and beyond. I would like to thank you from the bottom of my broken heart for adding the ceasefire resolution to tonight's agenda, effectively inviting important public dialogues in this climate of national gaslighting that has meant genocide is normal, that speaking out against it can get you fired and worse. Tonight, we find ourselves with our toes on the edge of a precipice. Islamophobia, anti-Semitism, xenophobia, and San Diego community are around the country at levels I cannot remember in my lifetime and I remember vividly the days and months after nine eleven. As a community, we have an opportunity, a moral imperative, to take a stand against such ideology and to say openly and without flinching that hate is not a collective value. As our elected leaders, you have this unique opportunity to set the tone for the future of Lemon Grove and carry on its legacy of justice. People may not know this, but the first successful school desegregation court decision in the U.S. came from Lemon Grove. Lemon Grove is the only city, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, that's actually building enough affordable housing right now. So it makes sense that Lemon Grove should be in this position to lead on this critical issue. And I urge you to move, to approve the agenda, item three, on ceasefire and peaceful resolution in Gaza. Some may say that this is not a good use of your time or research sources, that Gaza is an issue that doesn't impact us, that we have no control. But this is wrong. What's happening in Gaza transcends borders and speaks to the very core of our humanity. I drove here tonight, swerving to miss many six, seven, and eighted potholes in our streets. Tonight, in Gaza, the death toll for last week's flower massacre rose to one hundred and sixteen. More of the seven hundred and eighty people who were injured during that ambush will wait. will wait in for aid trucks, or are expected to die from their wounds. I had a doctor's appointment this morning in a sparkling new medical facility where I was given injections of a numbing liquid for a small procedure. In Gaza today, and over the last one hundred and fifty days, children have had life-saving surgery without anesthesia. I had dinner at the home of a Muslim friend from grade school who I hadn't seen in forty years. He and his wife made a feast of traditional dishes that tasted like the flavors of history and love, and peace, and connection, and humanity. In Gaza that weekend, ten children died because of our nation, because the government of Israel is strategically implementing a famine in addition to blowing up thirty thousand innocent people. I urge you to please vote in resolution.
Next, we have Spencer Levine, followed by Dr. Sammy Artaleva. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name. But also, too, I just want to, you know, ask people to, I want to make sure that we're all hearing what is shared, and I appreciate you respecting that. You can go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Vasquez, and councilmembers. I'm hoping this resolution. My name is Spencer Levine, with Jewish Voice for Peace, San Diego, and I support Gaza on this item. I was made to learn this week that Lemon Grove ranked one of four ground beef wars of education for the first successful school desegregation in the country. They made it clear that all children have the right to education. The time has come to make us make history again. Palestinian children do not have the right to education. They do not have the right to safety, the right to help, the right to food, the right to water. They in fact do not have the right to life. It is within our best interest as a civil society to pass a ceasefire resolution and to set an example for the rest of the country, set an example for the fight for education. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Dr. Sammy Artaleva, followed by Sarah.
Hello, Mayor Vasquez and councilmembers. My name is Dr. Sammy Artaleva. I'm a queer Palestinian American, and I've been a resident of the San Diego area for nearly a decade. Throughout my life, I've been witness both to the struggles of everyday people here in America trying to get by, and to the struggles of my fellow Palestinians in Palestine to survive the violence and ethnic cleansing array against us. At the last Lemon Grove City Council meeting, a public commentator cited the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights to find out that approximately three hundred thousand dollars of Lemon Grove residents' taxes have been sent to Israel during the genocide in Gaza. However, the U.S. has sent fourteen billion dollars in military aid to Israel since October seventh. And that three hundred thousand dollar figure comes for the normal amount of money in military aid that the U.S. sends to Israel every year, which is only three point eight billion dollars. The fourteen billion dollars includes over one point two billion dollars taken from the hands of Lemon Grove taxpayers. That money could have been spent here to recover from the floods affecting this community instead of being earned to fuel the war machine genociding Palestinians in Gaza. Lemon Grove and Palestine live in the same world, they are connected. Every dollar the U.S. sends to massacre Palestinians is money stolen from the hands of communities here in America, communities like Lemon Grove. I urge you to vote yes on an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution to stop this senseless violence being funded against this community's will. And I further urge you to not refer in your resolution to terrorists. This is harmful language that has been denigrating Palestinians in America for the entirety of our time in America.
Thank you so very much. Sarah Farid, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your last name, followed by Robert, I believe it's Wallace.
Kiamri? Good evening, Mayor Vasquez and honorable city council members. My name is Sarah Fru. I'm a member of Borderlands for Equity, advisory board, and organizer with the San Diego Palestine Coalition. I'm also a community advocate here in San Diego County. I want to start off by thanking you for being courageous and for being true leaders as what we need right now in this moment. I'm speaking here today to urge the city council, to urge you all, to pass item three, the ceasefire resolution. Passing the resolution will allow Lemon Grove to join the over forty cities across the country who are calling for a ceasefire. It will show the rest of San Diego County that Lemon Grove cares about human rights and the people in the U.S. and in Palestine, Gaza. So why is passing a resolution so critical? Why does it even matter? Passing this resolution is not only a way to join the international call for a ceasefire, but it is also important in creating a domino effect to push our federal elected officials to do what is needed and what is right in this moment. And you've seen that, you know, at the Biden administration, as a result of the efforts at the local level. A ceasefire means the stopping of this violence and the murder of innocent Palestinians. Although the Biden administration called for a ceasefire, they called for a temporary one. Palestinians in Gaza need an immediate and permanent ceasefire to be able to get the necessary humanitarian aid and rebuild their fallen structure. And that's the only way to ensure that the Israeli occupation forces and military don't continue the massacre of Palestinians after the sixteenth period. This issue may seem like a faraway issue abroad, but it is something much closer to home. Many community members, including your own constituents, care about this. This issue crosses racial, ethnic, and religious lines, as you'll hear from the audience and from the community. A recent national poll showed that sixty-one percent of likely voters, today's election day, are in favor of a ceasefire. This issue unites all of us, and unites all of our communities, and we want the Lemon Grove City Council to represent that. So again, I urge you to be the true community leaders that we need you to be in this moment. And I urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution. This is what our community needs, not only in Palestine, Gaza, but here in this room. We have folks who have families, who are currently in Gaza, in Palestine. This issue is beyond borders, this issue is beyond walls, this issue is about a humanitarian crisis that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Robert Wallace, followed by Ariana Federico Mondragon.
Hi, Mayor, hi, council. My name is Robert Bobby Wallace. I'm a tribal member from the Kumia Nation. My people have lived here for twelve thousand plus years, roam these hills right here, had families, hunted fish, lived a good life until they came and took care of us, and there was only seven hundred of us left at one time. So I can feel it in my DNA, and I can feel it in my fire, that's what we call it. I can feel it in my heart what all these people are going through. And I want to thank you for your courage, for your strength, and your leadership. And we hope you support the resolution and sign it, and stay strong. So thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Adriana Federico Mondragon, followed by
Aspor.
Good evening, Mayor Vasquez and councilmembers and city staff. My name is Ariana Federico Mondragon. I'm a first-generation Lame Grove resident here, and here to really support our Palestinian friends. I think it's important that this council passes a resolution. You know, in my own time, I worked as a community advocate, as a organizer. I do, I work in elections. Even today was really hard to have conversations with people about why they should be. You know, we have a lot of voters, a lot of people that are losing hope because of the crisis that is happening. You know, we don't have representatives that are bold enough to take a stance on an issue, on the humanitarian issue that we are currently seeing in Gaza. And I think it really does start, and I have to believe that it starts at a local level, to start fires. A lot of the movements that we have seen in the past, and you know, now have been locally have been because of community organizing. So I do appreciate that the council is looking at this resolution. I really urge the council and the mayor to pass the resolution, adopt it, because, you know, I don't see other, in other places, in the city of San Diego and San Diego County. It's really important to take a stance. And I think that's the least that we can do for a lot of the folks that are here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Areeh.
Tariq?
Yes, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. If, when you get to the mic, if you can restate your name so that we can get it on the record. Thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you. So, first of all, I would like to say my name is Tariq Aspor. I'm representing my family from the Beni Khalid tribe, who lost over a hundred twenty relatives and many more missing underneath the rubble, and many slaughtered in the West Bank. I'm also a Palestinian-American veteran, American veteran, U.S. Army, who has been crying out to all our Saudi-fish men and women to stand down and veterans to help. Also, I dedicate a big dedication to Erin Bushnell, who took his life to stand up with this. But our government has not stood up from day one to stop this heinous genocide of my family members. My whole community here is with us. We're all here together trying to stop this onslaught bloodshed that's happening. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Afra Abdul Lakhar. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Please be safe on the record.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for creating this safe space for all of us to be here as human beings. I'm addressing you not as your titles or roles or positions. I'm addressing you as human beings, mothers, sisters, fathers, brothers, who care. And that's why you gave up this opportunity, a wonderful opportunity to be here to speak up, to share our voices. I am Iraqi, an immigrant who arrived here twenty-three years ago. Also, my country suffered from political agenda, right? That also, till this minute, we did not receive apologies for the invasion of two thousand and three under false claims. That said, we are all here as humans can join our voices together to admit that this is a massacre and that children, adults, mothers, fathers, has been absolutely, calculatively, been killed and slaughtered under a certain agenda that started in eighteen eighty-nine, started with the Bill Four in nineteen eighteen, and it started in nineteen forty-seven. So this is history, we all can read it, there is no lies about it. We are here begging, I'm not saying urging, I'm saying begging as humans, to pass this resolution. I am also a social worker, working in an international rescue committee that works to support asylum seekers, refugees. And we are seeing the numbers of people who are fleeing atrocities due to fear, due to political regime and agenda. So here we are saying, how can we all try to invest all this wealth of humans, of minds, of philosophy, of books, of history, of art, into saving this world instead of dragging ourselves? This is a massacre, an atrocity, and a glincing of genocide which is being documented by the second. How can we see it and keep silence? Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Jackie Guan, followed by Asma Abdi.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Vasquez and city council members. My name is Jack Guan Guan. I am a resident of Lemon Grove and also a member of Agent Solidarity Collective. First, I would like to thank you all for being brave enough to agendize this ceasefire resolution and taking a critical step in the right direction. I moved to Lemon Grove in twenty twenty-two. It is where I've chosen to set my roots. When I first moved here, I was really proud to learn about Lemon Grove's history of fighting against school segregation. I am a very proud Lemon Grove resident today to be here, talking about this very important issue. With your leadership, Lemon Grove has a chance to continue its legacy of justice by refusing to be complicit in this humanitarian catastrophe of unprecedented size that has impacted innocent people in Gaza and in our own communities throughout San Diego County. In addition, as a city that was deeply affected by the floods, as was mentioned several times today, and neglected at a time of crisis, the billions of dollars that go to fund the genocide and massacre of Palestinians could go to support our own systems and infrastructure here in Lemon Grove. In fact, according to the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights, one point two million dollars from Lemon Grove goes directly to fund Israeli military and the genocide. Passing the ceasefire resolution is an important way we can utilize our democratic system. The call out this hypocrisy and urge our federal government and elected officials to call for an end to this genocide during the immediate and permanent ceasefire. Lemon Grove has the opportunity today to set an example and make history again as the first city in San Diego County to pass a ceasefire resolution during over forty cities across the country who have stood up for humanity and justice. Thank you again for taking on this crucial issue, and I urge you to vote yes on Agenda Item Number Three. Thank you. Thank you so very much. Next, we have Asma Abdi, followed by Justin Morgan.
Good evening, honorable Mayor Vasquez, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. My name is Asma Abdi. I'm a constituent and have been a resident of Lemon Grove for eighteen years. First, I would like to thank you for agendizing the ceasefire resolution and taking critical steps in the right direction. With your leadership, Lemon Grove has a chance to continue its legacy of justice by refusing to be complicit in this humanitarian catastrophe that has impacted innocent people in Gaza and in our own communities throughout San Diego County. I would like to reiterate what other folks have mentioned. As a city that was deeply affected by the floods, the billions of dollars that could go to fund, that are funding the genocide and massacre of Palestinians could go to support our own systems and infrastructure in Lemon Grove. Passing the ceasefire resolution is an important way that we can utilize our democratic system to call out this hypocrisy and urge our federal government and elected officials locally to call for an end to this genocide during immediate and permanent ceasefire. At least thirty thousand Palestinians have already been killed since October seventh, and over seventy-one thousand have been wounded by Israeli attacks. Nearly seventy percent of all buildings damaged, with at least forty-five percent of all residential buildings destroyed, completely or damaged beyond repair. This leaves over one million Palestinians in Gaza who have no residence to return to. Without a permanent ceasefire, thousands more Palestinian women, men, and children will continue to die. Thank you again for taking on this crucial issue, and I urge you to vote yes in support of Agenda Item Number Three.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Justin Morgan, followed by David Engel.
Good evening. My name is Justin Morgan, and I'm a property owner here at Lemon Grove. Hearing a lot about the floods is something that's relevant to me. I experienced it as well as some of my tenants, some serious flooding that we had. And despite all of this, I always consider the dire conditions that are seen every day on videos, on social media. that are seen every day on videos, on social media, about the plight of Palestinians. As I'm sure a lot of you know, that this issue is something that's been occurring for decades. It's possible mostly part of the Israel lobby that controls a lot of our governments. Without going into that rabbit hole, so to speak, I think it's important that we are here today in front of you to urge you to pass this ceasefire resolution because, given the massive control of our federal government and a lot of our state governments, of the Israel lobbies, it's our duty as constituents in Lemon Grove to start our voice and to make a change for the better. So I'd like to thank you for agendizing the ceasefire resolution. This is taking a critical step in the right direction. With your leadership, Lemon Grove has a chance to continue its legacy of justice or refusing to be complicit refusing to be complicit in this humanitarian catastrophe of unprecedented size that has impacted innocent people in Gaza and in our own communities throughout San Diego County. As a city that was deeply affected by the floods and neglected at a time of crisis, billions of dollars that go to fund the genocide and massacre of Palestinians could go to support our own systems and infrastructures. And commenting on that specifically, U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights, they have a website up. You can enter in any state in the country as well as cities, and it will allocate the ten-year plan from two thousand sixteen to give thirty-eight billion dollars to Israel unconditionally, despite all the other aid, bonds, conditions that we send there without any conditions. With one year of that unconditional aid going to Israel, we in Lemon Grove could have over three hundred thousand dollars just from that ten-year package. That accounts for forty houses. We have solar electricity, about a thousand of them for houses here in Lemon Grove. Very beneficial. I urge you to pass this resolution so we can continue.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have David Engel, followed by Darreen Nasir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Engel, and I am an American Jew and a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. I call today for council to pass this resolution in favor of an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Israel and Gaza. There is a mass disinformation campaign about the Israel-Gaza war. We have thrown away critical thinking because capitalism, greed, and a dirty campaign finance system dictate that the United States supports the settler colonialist racist apartheid state of Israel in spite of all the evidence that points to Israel as the oppressor. Israel is a wealthy, modern, first-world country. Even before October seventh, Gaza was a poor third-world colony barricaded and controlled by Israel. Now it is obviously far, far worse than that even. There are so many academic scholars, a great number of whom are Jewish themselves, whose writings are subject to academic rigor and peer review, that recognize that Israel is the oppressor. These Jewish scholars include the world-renowned Noam Chomsky, Norman Finkelstein, Avi Shlein, Elon Pepe, et cetera. Incidentally, Elon Pepe actually served in the Israeli Defense Forces during the nineteen seventy-three Yom Kippur War before he saw the light. Additionally, the human rights organizations Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, and Israeli Human Rights Group, B'Tselem, have all written lengthy reports on Israeli human rights violations. Also, former U.S. President Jimmy Carter has also been very critical of Israel and wrote an entire book dedicated to the subject called Palestine: Peace Not Apartheid, detailing why. Are these people and organizations all lying? What would be their motivation to lie? All the money and power is on the side of Israel. Please support this resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Darreen Nasir, followed by Mal Arikhat.
Hello, Madam Mayor Vasquez and City Councilmembers. My name is Darreen Nasir. I'm a Christian Palestinian-American, and I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six. I grew up in East County most of my life, and I'm here to call for or and pass, and hope that you pass, a permanent ceasefire and immediate peaceful resolution. The weapons Israel uses to kill and injure Palestinian people are funded by our taxpayer money. I'm standing for humanity and asking my representatives to take action to end U.S. military funding to Israel and stop this genocide. The Israeli military has used their tax dollars to kill Palestinian people, destroy their homes, and steal their native land. This is due to the Israeli Zionist agenda for ethnic cleansing of a people and is in violation of the U.S. laws. Israel is systematically blocking aid for Palestinians. Over a hundred people were murdered and over seven hundred and fifty injured waiting for bags of flour in Nenzer City. The people of Nenzer are starving, and they are being murdered for seeking human rights. At least ten children have died of starvation in the last week alone, and many parents have sorted to eating and feeding their children animal feed to survive Israeli genocide. Out of the fourteen billion dollars, tax dollars sent to Israel since October seventh, one point two million has been from Lemon Grove. Our community would have benefited from those funds instead of funding Israel's violence against the Palestinian people. The U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights, USCPR.org, the website declares that more than three hundred and thirty-three thousand tax dollars from Lemon Grove could have been used for households with public housing for over a year, children receiving free or low-cost health care, elementary school teachers' salaries, households with solar electricity produced for a year, students with their loan debt canceled, and N-95 respiratory masks. Without a permanent ceasefire, thousands of more Palestinians, women, men, and children will die. Thank you very much for your time and your compassion.
Thank you so very much. So, uh, next up is Narrel Arikhat, followed by Andy Temlett.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to thank you for bringing this resolution out for a city in San Diego, San Diego County, that we're sent here.
Don't touch it, sir.
Resolution that we need for, uh, needed ceasefire, permanent ceasefire. Thank you for being human to all the people, the women and children being killed. I'm just asking on that. And thank you for just being a leader in the community. And I hope by passing this resolution here in Lemon Grove that the other cities such as the city of San Diego and the other cities should understand and perform for us such a, pass such a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andy Temlett, followed by Yusuf Miller. Uh, Andy is not here. Uh, so we will move on to Yusuf Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Yusuf Miller, Executive Director of Actives San Diego. And I want to thank you for bringing this resolution for a ceasefire now. A ceasefire is a humane thing to do. I don't know about any of you, but I served twenty-five, twenty-four years in the United States military as a combat medic. I served in Iraq and Afghanistan. I've seen children blown up. I've seen mothers crying. I've seen children orphaned right up close and personal. We may read it on a paper, you may read it on a page, that ten thousand young children have been killed. You may read in a paper that twice that, over twenty thousand children have been injured. I am here for the little children in Gaza that have been targeted in this shameful war. These children are not the enemy. They never were. These children are the ones who are paying the highest price. And when you wipe out a people's root, you are committing genocide. You are committing genocide when you wipe out the root of a people for their advancement and population. The people of Gaza are in serious need and in serious crisis. I know you can go there yourselves and see it yourselves, but take it from me, from the eyes of Iran, from the eyes of Afghanistan, this is a horror and a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Jas Masood, followed by Amy Riff.
Good evening, um, Mayor Vasquez and Councilmembers. I first want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for agendizing this. This is historic. My name is Jas Masood. I'm a queer Palestinian and have lived here in San Diego for about nine years. These last few months have also, have been nothing short of heartbreaking for me and so many others. Not one day has gone by where I don't randomly erupt in tears. I'm certain that almost everyone behind me right now experiences the same thing. I'm chronically worried about my family in Palestine. I'm also fearful for the safety of my Palestinian family and pro-Palestinian comrades here, too. I don't know if you've kept up. Well, actually, after hearing you talk, um, I think you have, uh, kept up with the stats, but Islamophobic and anti-Semitic hate crimes have been rising rapidly in recent months. Voting yes on a ceasefire resolution might not be a silver bullet. Might not fix everything, but it will send a message to the rest of the region, the country, and maybe the world that you won't be complicit in genocide and ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people and that you stand on the side of the oppressed and occupied people everywhere. Make history and pass this ceasefire resolution now. Also, I'd like to add that after witnessing the horrors the last five months inflicted on Gaza by Israel, please don't ever refer to Palestinians as terrorists again. When people are occupied, resistance is justified.
Thank you. Uh, Amy Riff, followed by Gus Hasim.
Hello, good evening. Thank you. Actually, I'd like to say one thing really. Thank you. Seeing this issue brings me to like, we feel like we've been gaslit by every public, publicly, like official in this county, and I feel like you are the first. And I just want to thank you, thank you, thank you, because it's a local issue. I'm a mom against genocide, and I wake up every day to images of what we, we do, what we do. These are weapons that we make here in San Diego. Go. I know that you guys will see it, but there you go, every day. So thanks to technology, we can all see firsthand what's happening on the ground in Gaza. Over thirty thousand people have been killed, majority women and children. The words of, uh, in the words of Doctors Without Orders, these are the most catastrophic deaths that these people have had die. They're being crushed in their homes. They're losing limbs and having amputations without anesthesia. Now we are actively starving them to death. Children as young as five are experiencing suicidal ideation. Children are saying that they would rather be dead than experiencing what they are experiencing today. The truth has been exposed on a massive scale in spite of our Western media blackout. The people in Gaza have been live streaming their own genocide for all the world to see or witnessing an active genocide, ethnic cleansing, and humanitarian crisis in Palestine, which has also impacted Palestinians, Arabs, and Muslims here in this city and county. It's not a federal issue. With over forty cities across the country passing a ceasefire resolution, it's critical for Lemon Grove to pass this and put pressure on our federal leaders to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. I cannot keep waking up to this every day and knowing that I am complicit just by being a taxpayer in San Diego. It's unacceptable to me. I won't have my two young boys grow up like this, being complicit in a genocide. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Gus Hasim, followed by Adriana Beth Damaski.
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you for considering adopting this lifesaving resolution tonight. Uh, we're so proud of you as one of the only cities in the entire country to consider bringing this to the table and speaking in support of humanity. So thank you for that. My name is Gus. I'm a healthcare worker here in San Diego and a resident of this district. If you're wondering what I'm wearing around my neck, this is a Palestinian kubia, the black and white scarf, and many of my friends and family here are wearing the same thing. It is a representation of the Palestinian identity through a long, long, long history of resilience and strength. Tonight, we need your strength. I'm a Palestinian-American who is deeply concerned about the lack of general support our representatives and top administration has given to this devastating cause. I thank each of this, uh, each member of this council for taking the time to read, reflect, and learn about the Palestinian cause and what brings us all here tonight in a committed and dedicated fashion to look for your support and to be a beacon of light and hope for the rest of the cities in San Diego, California, and the United States in general. Healthcare workers and medics like myself and Ghazza are being targeted directly. They are being killed in an elimination process by the Israeli occupation. Three hundred and sixty-four healthcare workers have been killed in the past five months alone. Their only crime was saving those, their only crime was saving the lives of those whose, uh, whose U.S. bombs have been raining on. Most of Ghazza's hospitals are completely out of use today. It is not a crisis anymore. Ghazza's health system is now in a, in a mode of catastrophe. I have hope and faith in this council tonight to be a beacon of light in California, leading by example, by choosing to adopt this resolution that calls for an end. Let's end the nightmare for Palestinians. Let's sleep tonight knowing that we stood on the right side of history. Let's sleep tonight knowing that countless lives can be saved by standing in firm opposition to a cycle of violence and war against a civilian population that is besieged, blockaded, and now being genocided. Thank you. You are a part of history, and I hope to tell my children about your humanity. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Andrea Beth Damaski, followed by Tajay Banks. From what I understand, Andrea Beth Damaski left. And, uh, so we will move on to Speaker Tajay Banks.
Good evening, Mayor Vasquez and City Councilmembers. Uh, my name is Tajay Banks, and I am a resident of Lemon Grove. The reason why I'm speaking today is to urge you to vote for this resolution for a ceasefire and continued peace in Gaza. For the past five months, the Palestinian people have had to endure a brutal invasion in which many innocent civilians in Gaza have been killed, the death toll now being over thirty thousand, with nearly half of those being children. We as Americans see ourselves as a beacon of peace, freedom, and hope in the world, and it is up to us to now decide to stand for that and vote in favor of this resolution, to stand up to the unjust killing of innocent people. Our federal government has failed to implement policies that have, that lead to continued peace in Gaza. And when the federal government fails to do its job, it's up to us in our local communities to put pressure on the government as a whole and to let our voice be heard. Lemon Grove has a unique chance to be the first domino in this event. This will start a chain reaction that calls for peace and stability in Gaza. This will start a chain reaction that calls for peace and stability in Gaza. Palestinian Americans in our local community have had to sit by and watch as their homes and their people have been destroyed and displaced. Many of them within our local community have come here to, have come here today to witness this historic vote, and I urge you to listen to their pleas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have India Rado, followed by Sabad Mor.
Hello. Hello, I am a citizen of Lemon Grove, and I wish I could be as eloquent and nuanced as some of the previous speakers. All I can say is that I support this resolution, and I support it because of a personal incident that I witnessed. In one of the iterations of this conflict, I stood next to a friend as he took a phone call, thinking it was his uncle, sharing that he was returning from a visit here to the area that we talk about. I'm not going to say which side he stood on, but he was a leader in that area. That wasn't what the phone call was. His uncle failed to return to his home because he was assassinated. And I watched his parents' mother, who stood next to him, fall apart at the last sibling she lost. I don't want any family in my community or in this area to receive a phone call like that. It was horrible to watch. So, I ask you to stand together as a council and to put forward this resolution to join other voices that turns our eyes towards this area and lets them know that we see them not in judgment, but in fear for our future and hope for a possibility of change. I thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Wad Hovor, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, followed by Noun Abdo Ades.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Vasquez, Mayor Pro-Tan, respected City Council members and staff. My name is Swad Moud. I am an advisory board member of Borderlands for Equity, and I want to thank you all for the courage to agendize the ceasefire resolution, and I urge you all to support the ceasefire resolution. According to the Gaza Health Ministry, over one million Palestinians are experiencing infectious diseases, and that's because of the fact that Israel has bombed hospitals, almost every single one of them. And I want to thank you councilmembers now for bringing up the importance of supporting children and motherhood. It is Women History Month, and everybody is celebrating women, but I want to bring your attention to all the young girls and women in Gaza without access to sanitary products for their mentees, to all the mothers who are expecting without access to prenatal care, without access to medical assistance in birth, as well as in the event of complications such as miscarriages. And in the event that individuals do have access to medical care, there is inadequate medical supplies. So, individuals are going into operations, as mentioned, without aesthetics. It's truly a critical and dire situation. And you don't have to be Muslim or Palestinian in order to support a ceasefire. I want to be clear, this is a case of ethnic cleansing, of genocide, and there is intentional starvation inflicted on the people of Gaza by the Israeli government. I ask that Lemon Grove stand in its history of supporting civil rights and make the choice to support the civil rights of Palestinians. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Noun Abdo Ades. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, and then Milal Oshen Abdakhar. And if you could just say your name on the record, so we have a correct pronunciation. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Noura Alves Vasquez. I am a community member and a proud member of Borderlands for Equity and founder of Abundance of Youth, a community project here. I was, I would like to thank you first for putting this ceasefire resolution on the agenda and taking the meaningful steps in the right direction. I come to you today as a youth, as a Muslim, Black woman, and as an immigrant. First, as a youth, to tell you that and remind you that every adult in this country has failed the children in Gaza and continues to fail the children of Gaza. I see children protesting for children to live. The children in Gaza deserve to live. Every person in Gaza deserves to live and in Palestine. I come to you as a youth, asking you not to fail us again, asking you to remember that they deserve and they are deserving of life and always have been. I come to you as a Black woman in this community who knows the bitterness of inequality, the bitterness of racism, the bitterness that comes with betrayal of waking up every day and realizing the systems that are supposed to be built to help you live are betraying you every day, a lie to your face. I come to you today as an immigrant to remind you of the bitterness that comes with displacement, with, that comes with not having a home. And I don't want this for any person in Palestine or Gaza. We are witnessing this genocide live from our phones. This is the most documented genocide in history, and we are still unable to do anything for them. So, I come to you today, and thank you for putting this on the agenda and seeing this as a priority, unlike other leaders in this country. This is, this isn't just a federal issue. With over forty cities across the country passing a ceasefire resolution, it is critical for Lemon Grove to pass this and put pressure on our federal leaders to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you again for taking this crucial issue, and I urge that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Orin Robinson, followed by Ryan Corvill.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Council members, and everyone. My name is Orin. I'd like those who've spoken before me, I am also Jewish. I am also a local volunteer member with Jewish Voice for Peace. Jewish Voice for Peace began in California in nineteen ninety-six and is now the largest Jewish anti-Zionist organization in the world. Zionism was a modern ideology started by antisemitic Christians that argues that Jewish people can only find safety in a Jewish-only colony. As anti-Zionists, we say all people everywhere should live with freedom and safety. There was a handful of local Jewish public school educators and environmental advocates who started our local, all-volunteer, San Diego County Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace in twenty thirteen. And we now represent hundreds of dues-paying members and thousands of supporters in San Diego County, with over one hundred supporters here in Lemon Grove, among the many here tonight. So, I'll be brief. We urge Lemon Grove City Council to vote yes on this resolution because every human life is precious, whether Palestinian, Israeli, or anyone else. For Palestinians to gain their freedom is not only the only viable option for Palestinians, but also for Israelis and Jews to live in safety too. The true path to safety is through every single person being able to exercise their rights to safety, dignity, and freedom. Over the past one hundred and fifty days, the Israeli military killed thirty thousand six hundred and thirty-one people in Gaza. Those are just the confirmed numbers as of earlier today. We say enough, not one more life. Ceasefire now is the only path toward a future of a free Palestine and freedom and safety for all. Please vote yes.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Ryan Corvill, followed by Padwa Val Asai.
Mayor Vasquez, City Council members and staff, I'd like to extend my best to this is also the councilmember Gesto and family for his safe and quick recovery. I also acknowledge and thank the fire and sheriff departments for their capable and professional reports tonight. My name is Rin Corbe. My pronouns are he/him. There are in the room any sighting paired. I'm six-three, two-twenty-five pounds, wearing green pants, a purple and blue sweater, and rapidly graying hair. I live in light sight, and I'm here tonight supporting my friends and colleagues who live, work, and play in Lemon Grove. I want to thank you for having the courage and integrity to support the resolution demanding a ceasefire for the horrific conflict in Gaza. There are no winners in a situation like what is happening today, as if having a winner would ever excuse any of the death and destruction that has been wreaked in the Middle East. Whenever children die at the hands of men, everyone loses. All children in this conflict deserve what we Americans claim today, the chance to live without fear, to learn, grow, love, and be loved. When any child is denied that, the world loses. There are parties on many sides of this horror, each with their own versions of a solution, some driven by fear, hatred, and greed, others by a true concern for the community of which we are all apart. But no solution can be had while bombs fall. Thank you for being a voice for compassion and calling for ceasefire now.
Next we have Padwana Palestine, followed by Rebecca Yang.
So, Padwa Palestine. All right, thank you for being the first city in this county to bring this humidizing resolution forward. I think it, it does mean a lot, or not just saying that, just seeing how all of our elected officials throughout County of San Diego are not implementing what they should be doing, listening to their constituents, like you are standing up and you're actually practicing what democracy is based on. Thank you for recognizing my humanity and my existence as a Palestinian. You are mothers, and I am too. You saw my baby earlier. She's at home now. Two mothers are killed in Gaza every hour. On average, a child is killed every ten minutes in Gaza. By the time this council meeting is over, my baby and I would be killed, just wiped off the face of this planet. That's not because of Hamas, the narrative that Western media continues to push out. It's because Israel's occupation forces, their military, and their government that is purposely killing Palestinian civilians with the support of the US government. The binder over there that has all those opposed emails, where are all those people? Because this room is filled with people wearing kufiyas and plaques. Where are all those people that sent those emails? Are those real people? I don't think those people care about Lemon Grove. They don't care about the people here. I really think they just want to continue to spew the racist rhetoric against Arab and Palestinians. They have nothing but hate for us, just for simply being Palestinian and being indigenous to Palestine. That binder filled with emails saying the opposition, the emails of opposition saying that this resolution will not bring anybody peace and that it will be divisive for Lemon Grove. Well, do you see the people in the crowd tonight supporting a ceasefire? We have people from all parts of the world, all different faces, all colors, all backgrounds, all ethnicities. That seems pretty uniting to me, not divisive. This is what Lemon Grove looks like. I grew up here. I spend my money here. I know that Hamlet used to be Ryan's Brothers, and before Ryan's Brothers, it used to be Starbucks, before Starbucks figured out it wasn't working for them. I know this community. I know the stoplight, Palm Avenue, Lemon Grove Avenue. You know, we know that. We're, we're stop and go. So, let that be finally. I'm from here. I know this. I know what Lemon Grove looks like. That binder filled with the opposition to this resolution, what they support is hate. And they support the leaders of Israel who have said the following hateful language. This is what leaders of Israel have said in the last five months. These are not my words, and I can give you the, the sources, real quick. Gaza will become an area where people cannot live.
Next we have.
They said a baby is an enemy, a first grader is an enemy, a pregnant woman is an enemy. Am I an enemy?
Can you please cut off the mic? So, before we move forward with any of the speaker slips, I just want to acknowledge everyone in the room who spoke for following the process. Please be respectful to people, but also people's kind. That's important. And so, I just want to put that out there as we continue with the speaker slips. And we'll continue with Rebecca Yang, followed by Asse, Asse Arayat. And I apologize in advance if I mispronounced your name, and when you come up, you can say your name on the record. Thank you.
My name is Rebecca, and it's great to see you councilmembers now. I remember we used to work together at Legal Aid, so it's awesome to see that you're continuing your great work here in the City Council at Lemon Grove. And thank you, everyone on the City Council, for your courage and your bravery and leadership in bringing forth this ceasefire resolution. And my comments are to ask that you all support this ceasefire resolution. I'm Chinese-American and Christian, and my faith teaches me that all are made in God's image. This includes Palestinians, Muslims, Arabs, Jewish people, trans, LGBT communities, Black people, indigenous people, people of color, Christians, and everyone else I may have mentioned. My faith teaches me that we have to advocate for the oppressed, and the oppressed people are Palestinians today. The occupation forces occupying Palestine have created an apartheid government for over seventy years and have currently murdered over thirty-five thousand Palestinians. Fifty thousand of those are children. Thousands of children are being made orphans. They're being made amputees, sometimes both. There are so many orphans being created by Israel and the US that there's a new acronym called No, or Wounded Child, No Surviving Child. So, children who can't even speak, people don't know their names, they don't know their family members, and they rely on the goodwill of other Palestinians to take care of them. Children who aren't murdered by American bombs are now at risk of starvation by the famine imposed by the occupation and by our own government. At least ten children have died now due to starvation in the last week alone. You've heard about the Flower Massacre that others have spoken about. Many people have resorted to eating grass and animal feed. This is reminiscent of what Jewish people had to go through during the Holocaust. So, this is the Holocaust now on the Palestinian people. I celebrated my dad's seventy-ninth birthday this past weekend, and how many Palestinians have been stripped of that basic human experience of celebrating their family members. We are witnessing an active genocide, ethnic cleansing, and humanitarian crisis in Palestine which has been created by the occupation called Israel and the US. And this has not only impacted Palestinians, but Palestinians, Arabs, Muslims, and Christians here in this city and county. It's not just a federal issue. There have been over forty American cities who have passed a similar ceasefire resolution, and it's critical that Lemon Grove passes a resolution today and to put pressure on our federal leaders to call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Thank you again for your bravery and the courage in passing this ceasefire.
Thank you so very much. Next we have Asse Aray. Can you please just say your name? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Asse Aray. I urge you to pass item three for an immediate ceasefire resolution. Since watching genocide take place in real time through our devices, is it enough to understand the gravity of what's been going on in Palestine? I want to take the rest of my time and give you some steps from the last one hundred and fifty-one days of massacre by Israel. Gaza's death toll surpasses thirty thousand individuals, people with lives, families, loved ones, no different than all of us. Twenty-five thousand of these people are women and children. The total number of abductions by Israeli forces since October seventh is over seven thousand people. In the past thirty days alone, Israel has killed over three thousand five hundred and thirty-five Palestinians and injured over four thousand two hundred and forty-six. Israel isn't only starving Palestinians to death, but also actively targeting those seeking aid. On day one hundred and forty-six of the genocide, on February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, Israeli forces opened fire on Palestinians in line for aid trucks, killing over seventy-seven and injured over two hundred and fifty innocent civilians, again, in line for aid trucks. This isn't the first time Israel has targeted Palestinians away to aid. These are just some of the unthinkable crimes that have been taking place in the last one hundred and fifty-one days. The escalating constant violence and suffering against innocent lives is a threat to humanity. I urge you to pass item three for an immediate ceasefire resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next we have Jean Peterson, followed by Manola Clark Manson. She's not going to speak, but I'll hand this one off. And so then we will proceed with Ismaan Abdulah.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jean Peterson, and I'm in Lemon Grove.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jeanne Peterson, and I'm a Lemon Grove resident and business owner. I'm here because I'm pro-kid, and I'm asking you to adopt this ceasefire resolution because kids are being killed, kids are starving, kids are losing their homes. They're losing their parents, their limbs, their siblings, and their extended family. To me, this issue is not about being pro-Israel or pro-Palestine. It's about being pro-kid. Please, just as you protect your own kids, protect the kids of others, please adopt this resolution for a ceasefire.
Thank you so very much. So, next we have Ismaan Abdulla, followed by Michael McDonald.
Good evening. My name is Ismaan Abdulla, and thank you, Honorable Mayor Vasquez and council members, for agendizing this item, the ceasefire resolution. Prior to coming up to the podium, there was so much that I wanted to say, and I was wondering how I was going to fit into the timing, but I'm cutting into it with this. And the reality is, so much has been said over the past 151 days of genocide. What do you say after 151 days of genocide, with the world turning a blind eye? I've seen the world roar more so, especially our leaders, at times that historical buildings were being burned as opposed to Palestinian children and Palestinian men who are digging rubble with their own hands, pulling folks out of the rubble, and Palestinian women. Our dear friends here in the room have said so much about the horrific atrocities that have been witnessed during this time of genocide. So honestly, even though I speak today, I am running out of words after 151 days, wondering where has humanity been? I'm running out of words, wondering how much many more people need to be killed beyond the 30,000 souls that have been lost, the 70,000 that have been injured. Gaza, before this genocide, was an open-air system, open-air prison, and today is an extermination camp. For Palestinian children, if they're not dying by bombs or Israeli snipers that are funded by the United States of America, they are being killed through starvation, they are being killed through the lack of healthcare. They are being killed constantly in multiple different ways beyond that which you can just see. And the reality is, when we think about what our elected officials do, and I thank you all for putting this on the agenda, courage is not, as I've been told, the lack or absence of fear, is to act despite them. And yes, the political leadership, the political environment has not taken that step to lead, but here in Lemon Grove, you're taking that step here in San Diego, that I'm hoping other elected officials can follow. Leadership is not waiting for the right time to speak up. Leadership is leading even in those times that is not politically convenient. And when your values are clear, decisions are clear. When your values are clear, decisions are clear. And in this moment, the last 20 seconds that I have, I want to say thank you, and I really hope that you vote for this ceasefire resolution. And I want to yield my time for all 30,000 individuals in the last couple of seconds, for us to remember them, for they had names, they had souls, they had families, and they had loved ones.
Preparation of Palestine starts with a ceasefire. Thank you so very much. Next, we have Michael McDonald, followed by Brenda Hammond.
Hello. So, thank you, Mayor and council members, and to my open calls. I'm a community member and a member of the Asian Solidarity Collective, a grassroots organization based in Chula Vista. Earlier, we heard reports, or I heard reports, from first responders to Lemon Grove, highlighting the issues that Lemon Grove continues to see: the lack of shelter for homeless neighbors, crumbling infrastructure, public care for those suffering from substance abuse, and senior services. I also heard you get roasted by residents who were talking about the lack of assistance from FEMA. FEMA, as you know, is a federal program, and they couldn't even provide adequate assistance that your residents were coming to you, now desperate for help. And they were left with the bill and on the verge maybe of even homelessness themselves. Instead, we have a, or instead of a well-funded emergency response funding and program for these so-called 100-year floods, our elected leaders continue to fund Israel's genocide in Gaza and Palestinians. I stand here, along with organizers in this room, other residents, activists, and also with Palestinians and millions around the world demanding our local officials to call for a permanent ceasefire, allowing humanitarian aid, and the end of support for Israel's genocide and occupation of Palestine. I want to take this time here now to thank all the organizers here, the activists and the people who have continued to show up, by being the voice for all the martyrs, all the children, babies, and mothers, and fathers, brothers, and sisters in Gaza. I'm an Asian in diaspora, and like others who have Asian ancestry, I'm attached to another country that was torn apart by war. Obinawa lost a quarter of its population after World War II, generations lost, children orphaned, in memory of immense loss that will never be forgotten. Palestinians have been experiencing these same words, and we are here to say enough is enough. I urge you all, I demand you all, to support this agenda item.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Brenda Hammond, followed by Cheryl Robinson.
Testing, testing.
Is it working now?
It's working.
Okay. I don't know how this is going to end, but I can tell you that I've been through this before, stand up outside with 9/11. So, I was involved with 9/11, before and after 9/11. But I don't want to get into that. What I want to say is that whoever, however this ends, and whatever side is going to win or not win or whatever, we're going to get a lot of refugees. And I just want to say that everybody needs to be treated, that they're going to come here to be citizens or come here to get help. They all need to be treated well. Because after 9/11, when you look at these pictures, they're dated in October after 9/11, because my county and friends were treated very badly out in Al-Qa'home, saying that they're the ones that did all this. So, I baked them a bunch of cookies, and I want to, I want to share with you. So, I just wanted to say that whatever happens with all this stuff, I don't like it either, but whatever happens, we need to treat everybody the same and treat them really nicely. What I shared with you personally earlier is nothing compared to what I'm seeing right now. I'm seeing both sides being treated very badly, and I'm working here in the United States to not be like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cheryl Robinson, followed by Joaquin Vasquez.
Hi. I have to give you disclosure. I am Cheryl Robertson, trustee of the Lemon Grove School District. But I am here by personal capacity as a member of the community, and none of my statements should be taken as use of the Lemon Grove authority. I submitted a public comment, because we all saw the meeting. I wasn't sure if I was saying it over here, but these are the flip notes for people to hear. Today, I speak alongside both Jewish and Palestinian neighbors in hopes that this resolution can be a first step in calling for peace around San Diego County. The death toll in Palestine has now surpassed 30,000, 1,200 are innocent children. As we sit here tonight, more children are dying of starvation as Israel continues to block and attack aid convoys to that region. In the last 24 hours, IDF has committed 10 massacres, killing 97 people, with more still being dug out in the rubble, and that's at 9:00 AM this morning. I think of the brutal violence innocent children are experiencing, and I think of my children. I cannot and will not stay silent. The Israeli government has long been committing apartheid against Palestinian people and continue to carry out this genocide. They take taxes from and control funding for Palestinian communities. Israel controls the water and septic routes, imposing massive movement restrictions. Illegal Israeli settlements plague the West Bank, where they have stolen massive amounts of Palestinian property, and Palestinians are being forcibly removed from their homes. Palestinians are being gunned down in the streets, and thousands more are being held in detention without charges or due process. These actions are all apartheid and crimes against humanity under the Rome Statute and Apartheid Convention. In Gaza, IDF has raped women, made no attempt to limit casualties of innocent people, used starvation as a weapon of war, and gunned down Palestinian refugees fleeing while waving white flags. These are war crimes under the Geneva Convention. In 1957, and again in 1977, my grandfather, a minister of the United Church of Christ, went on humanitarian missions to Palestine. Five decades later, here we are, still funding the worsening apartheid and genocide. Not a single person is safer. As Israel continues to threaten Rafah, Egypt is constructing a wall at the Rafah Crossing, and the Camp David Accords of 1978 between Israel and Egypt are coming dangerously close to being nullified. And I was just made aware that people in this room served in Sinai. Additionally, the war between Israel and Hamas has fueled hate. I call on you to adopt this resolution unanimously.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have Joaquin Vasquez, followed by John McHannell.
Good evening, Mayor Vasquez and respected council members. My name is Joaquin Vasquez. I'm a Lemon Grove resident, and I'd like to thank you for considering the ceasefire resolution. While I've heard the stories, you've seen the live stream videos of what the state of Israel has been doing to Palestine. I know about the tens of thousands of Palestinians that they've killed since October 7th. We know that Israel is systematically blocking crucial humanitarian aid for Palestinians, that the people of Gaza are starving to death and being murdered for seeking human rights. And we have heard of how parents are even resorting to feeding animal feed to their children to try to survive the genocide. Make no mistake, this is an active genocide, ethnic cleansing and humanitarian crisis that we are witnessing in Palestine. Without a permanent ceasefire, thousands of more innocent Palestinians, women, men, children, and elders will continue to die. Last year, I suffered a life-threatening accident, and without medical resources that we have here, I wouldn't be able to stand here tonight. Israel has bombed and destroyed almost every hospital in Gaza, leaving only five operational, leaving the more than 71 injured Palestinians with little to no resources, robbing them even from the fundamental human right of healthcare. It is really hard, around my head, around the fact that we still live in a world where we have to convince others of how important it is to value everyone's life just as we value our own and that of our loved ones. So, to the right thing, Lemon Grove, I urge you to vote yes in support of the agenda, and three, the resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. I'm confident that everyone in this body in front of me is in agreement, and that we will be seeing this council do the right thing and approve the resolution and lead San Diego County in the right direction on the issue. Thank you to Palestinians.
Thank you so very much. Next, we have John McHannell.
My name is Dean, City Council, and Mayor. Good evening, City Council and Mayor Vasquez. I found out about this just today or yesterday, and I heard about it, I was pricking myself. I just couldn't believe that while I'm sitting right here passing this resolution, I haven't looked at it. I'm a resident of Lemon Grove for four years and a volunteer here, and I urge you to pass this human rights resolution for three reasons. Because it's fair. It's fair for Palestinians to have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, just like we want that for our own children. And two, because it's the smart thing to do. It's in the interest of our country to be at peace, to save money, and to avoid long-term empathy with the important people in the international community who sympathize with the Palestinians. That is most of the world. And three, because when we have compassion on those who are less fortunate, we are being loving and kind to that part of ourselves that is vulnerable. Our compassion toward others is reflected back to heal us. So, I also want to say I urge you to remove the language about terrorism. And I was raised Catholic and Protestant. I've been lucky to be welcomed to the homes of my Jewish brothers and sisters and Palestinians. And when they came for the communists, I remained silent. I was not a communist. In the words of Yomar, "When they launched up the social democrats, I remained silent. I was not a social democrat." "When they came for the trade unionists, I did not speak out. I was not a trade unionist." "When they came for the Jews, I remained silent. I was not a Jew." "When they came for me, there was no one left to speak out." Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And that completes all of the speaker slips that we have here tonight for this particular agenda item. And so, we will have a discussion, as this was a council-driven agenda item. I'm not very sure if there's many questions that staff can ask as it doesn't have anything to do with the business of the city of Lemon Grove. So, what I'll do is I'll start around the questions, but we'll lean to council members to provide responses as they are agreed for this agenda item. And so, I'll start with council members no.
Madam Mayor, if I may, before council members no makes her comment, I would just like to note for the record that the City Clerk's Office, prior to the start of the meeting, has received written communications for this item. Approximately 78 comment letters in support were received, and then a total, or approximate total, of 823 comment letters were in opposition. Those comment letters can be found near the front entrance of the community center. And I'll turn this over to council members no.
Thank you so much, everybody, for coming and sharing your experience and sharing your information and sharing your passion to make sure that human rights is something that we can pursue all across the international spectrum. I would like to make a suggested correction on the third paragraph to remove the words "a" terrorists and change that to the word "an," "an." And then in section two, where it says "immediate ceasefire," to add a comma and the word "permanent" before the word "ceasefire."
Thank you so much. I will move on to Councilmember Leary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. After hearing what everybody had to say, I'd like to support removing the word terrorist from this resolution. I'd like to hear from my council colleagues to see what they think in regards to that. I know that Councilmember Snow just asked that we keep the word terrorist, but just add a letter n. So it's not a terrorist, but in terrorist? You said that we remove the word terrorist?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I would support that myself and I want to hear from my colleagues about that as well.
Thank you so very much. Mayor Tim Mendoza.
Yes, I will pay with that too. And also in the fourth whereas, we can just take out the word terrorist after the loss. It still makes sense. And I just want to make a little comment, a short comment, because we have a lot of comments tonight and I appreciate everything that everyone said, spoken with a lot of passion from your heart. And we definitely all heard that. So I was contacted maybe a month ago by my friend Menesh Khan. She put my glasses on, she is, she is. And so she contacted me and said, I'd like to talk to you about this resolution in the city of Lemon Grove. And I'm not going to lie, it was a little scary. You know, I was like, whoa, Lemon Grove, really, you know? But, you know, I know Menesh Khan and I thought, yeah, I'm going to talk to her and some other friends. We're on a Zoom call and you guys did an awesome job of convincing me to step out of my comfort zone and bring this resolution forward. So I want to thank you for that. And yes, I've been told, you know, by various people to stay in my lane. This doesn't belong in the business of Lemon Grove. And I, you know, I just, we have a very diverse community here in Lemon Grove and in East County. And if, you know, if not now, when? And I really do hope that this does have, you know, one more city, you know, might say, oh, wow, they, you know, they did that in Lemon Grove and it was pretty painless. Maybe we can do this in Chulavista or San Diego or, you know, Alcoa Home. Let's do it in Alcoa Home, okay? Anyway, thank you so much. I'd like to move that we had documented this resolution as amended and thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. And I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone who came to Lemon Grove to speak regarding this particular resolution. I do have some questions regarding this language because if you go down to the whereas is one, two, three, four. Number five, it says, "Many of our community members have suffered from an alarming rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia." This resolution would be specific to Lemon Grove. It would not be universal for any other jurisdiction within San Diego County. And so I'd like to know, you know, with this language, you know, who has suffered here in our city regarding Islamophobia and antisemitism? And while I know that staff is not involved with this resolution, but, you know, if we are investing in public safety and our community is not safe, then Lemon Grove has a problem. And so I'd like to ask our deputy, our lieutenant here, our Lieutenant Sherbary, have there been any incidences reported regarding Islamophobia, antisemitism, LGBTQ issues, and attacks on those folks, but also people who are Hispanic, also people who are Black? Because I want to know that our investment in public safety is sound and that people here in this city are protected and they're safe. And so if you could share, you know, what our status is as a city, that would be great.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we in the last year had one case, which we document these as hate crimes. And I'm not going to get into too much of the specifics of the case, but it was simply a case of a mentally challenged member of the community who had a rock thrown at him. We've had no other crimes other than that crime.
That was reported.
It's the single crime that was reported to us.
You're asking a white cop.
I will ask you to please show respect in this city council meeting. This is the city of Lemon Grove. I documented here how many comments were not from Lemon Grove residents. And while we appreciate you coming here for this resolution, there were twenty-three people who spoke in support of a resolution for the city. And out of all the speakers, there were only twelve people who actually live in this city. And our priority here in this city is the city of Lemon Grove. And I want to make sure-
My prayer house is right here in Lemon Grove, ma'am. My prayer, I pray here.
I will have to ask you to leave. And so, you know, we will be respectful as we get through this agenda item. We will be respectful of each other's time, but also our ability to synthesize the language that's here in this resolution. Our problem, where it says, "Many of our community members have suffered from an alarming rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia," and this is speaking specifically to Lemon Grove. My question is to the maker of this resolution, how can this language be modified so it speaks truth about the city of Lemon Grove instead of it being a broad statement of other jurisdictions, not only here in San Diego County, the state of California, but also across America and beyond?
So the language that's currently there, it says, "Many of our community members have suffered an alarming rise in antisemitism and Islamophobia." Because I'm a nerd and a lawyer, this is not limited to strictly Lemon Grove. We see ourselves as part of a larger community. We have two, at least two mosques in our community. And we've heard from people who actually came here from our community. But in addition to that, in my research, it said that there was a seven-hundred percent rise in Islamophobia and a four-hundred percent rise in antisemitism. And that permeates our community. People are scared. We have these children come up to us and tell us they were scared at their universities. They were scared to go to work. And antisemitism and anti-Islamophobia doesn't always rise to the level of a crime. It's in people being denied jobs, it's being denied opportunities, it's being shunned by your peers. It arises in so many different facets of our lives and it just has zero place in our community. Zero place in our community. And so it is Lemon Groveers, we seldom get twelve people from Lemon Grove commenting on anything in our community. But in our community, twelve people showing up and coming here. I read every single one of those, almost thousand emails that came to us. I reached out to both Arabic leaders, Palestinian leaders, Jewish leaders in the community, people who had different opinions on this resolution, the need for the resolution. I spoke to a lot of people before we got here and this language was shared with them. And I was, this language reflects both Jewish and Islam people's experience in our community. And so I think that this plus the data shows that we have this in our community and we need to root it out. And we will tell the community that we have no place for hate. And that's the reason why we need a statement like this and a resolution like this. What happens globally affects us here locally. And locally, we're going to make a stand that this has zero opportunity for our children to be discriminated against.
So perhaps I didn't phrase the question correctly because this speaks specifically to Lemon Grove and you're talking about a global issue. May I make the recommendation that you change it from community members to our nation? Because this does not speak to the true character of our city. This is, this is an international issue. And if we are saying community, I just check with our public safety to gauge the true temperature of our cities. I'm not saying that there is not an issue, but we need to make sure that this language reflects exactly what is going on. And so changing it from community members, you know, many, you know, people across the nation have suffered from alarming rise because you're giving me a very broad statistic that does not apply to Lemon Grove.
I was just going to say, I think it does apply to Lemon Grove. And there are people who live here, I mean, you yourself have suffered extensive prejudice and acts. I mean, your tires were slapped, you know, you've had issues yourself. And I have actually, you know, I've spoken to, and I'm not going to say like which side, but to college students who are, after October seventh, are having, you know, issues. They're being treated unfairly discriminatory at their colleges. And so, yeah, you know, that maybe their college isn't in Lemon Grove, but they live in Lemon Grove and go to college. I live in Lemon Grove as a college student. So, you know, if you, if it takes, I mean, I don't know, change the wording?
Don't change it.
If that is, if you're, if, you know, I don't know if that deludes the actual resolution. So I mean, if that's not, if that's what it takes for you to improve it, I mean, is it that important to you? I just don't understand why it's that important.
I'll turn it over to Councilmember Leary.
Well, I actually just want to point out a little bit of hypocrisy coming from Madam Mayor and that the entire time that Councilmember Mendoza has been talking, you've been interrupting her and saying, yes, it does. Yes, yes, no, yes. Had any of us done that, you would be scorning us, you'd be calling a recess of five, 10 minutes, and you'd be citing some sort of rules that you think exist? Madam Mayor, listen up. Listen to the people in this room. Listen to your colleagues. Let's open up. Let's step up as leadership. Let's not interrupt one another. Let's do the right thing here.
Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Snow. And I apologize, Mayor Tim Mendoza.
Okay, I have made a motion.
I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Before we go and call the vote, I have a few words that I want to say. And as Mayor of the city of Lemon Grove, my priority, my primary duty is to prioritize the needs and wellbeing of our community. And, you know, our city has faced significant challenges regarding the storms leading to extensive damage on our infrastructure, including streets, properties, and storm drains. And it is imperative that we devote our efforts to addressing these urgent local concerns, ensuring the safety of our residents. You know, I'm concerned about this particular request to address this ongoing conflict affecting people of Israel and Palestine, to pass this resolution. While the suffering of loss of life are deeply troubling, I believe it's essential to recognize that this is a federal issue and not within the jurisdiction of our municipal city government. Our focus must remain on our annual city goals and priorities and addressing the real needs of this community, especially the aftermath of recent storms. Let me be clear, the ongoing cycle of violence and bloodshed must come to an end. And the only path to a lasting solution, a real solution to the conflict can be achieved through dialogue, diplomacy, and compromise. Now, I value peace, justice, and human rights, and I stand in solidarity with all that are affected by the conflict and call for an immediate end to the hostilities. However, I do find this inappropriate for the city of Lemon Grove to pass a resolution concerning this matter. Our main duty and primary focus must be on the urgent needs of our community, particularly in the wake of the recent winter storms. Our streets are in urgent need of repairs. Tending to damaged properties and fixing our storm drains to prevent further harm are the immediate priorities that require our full attention and allocation of resources. That being said, my commitment to supporting peace and justice remains unwavering. And let us stand behind our federal representatives that have been elected to take on this endeavor and achieve a true ceasefire and facilitate peaceful negotiations. And it is imperative that we do not lose sight of our obligation to fulfill local responsibilities and our obligation to Lemon Grove residents. So, you know, it's important to acknowledge that this is a local municipal government. We do not have any jurisdictions. We do not have the ability to do anything at the federal level. And so with that said, you know, I just wanted to put that on the record and make sure that everyone understands that when this passes, that the true power behind this will lay flat. Because we do not have the power or the ability to make any change as it relates to the decisions that are made at the federal level. Thank you. I will go ahead and ask our city clerk to call the vote.
Yes, before I conduct the roll call vote, I would just like to confirm the changes so that way when I finalize this resolution, if it passes tonight, I have the verbiage here. So on the third whereas, I have whereas on October seventh, twenty twenty-three, Hamas launched an attack. Is that correct? So we're just removing the word terrorist. And then on the fourth whereas, whereas in response, the state of, whereas in response, the state of Israel has engaged in a bombing campaign targeting Hamas, operating, again, removing the word terrorist. Is that correct? Is that correct? Are those the only changes?
No.
No?
There's one more. In section two.
Section two. Section two.
In the third line.
Third line, got it.
After the word "immediate," the comma, and then insert the word "permanent."
An immediate ceasefire and the comma, permanent?
No, an immediate, permanent ceasefire.
And that's, are those the only changes?
Yes. One more. In section one, line two, you have listed there terrorist acts. Do you want to include terrorist acts, or do you want to remove them?
I mean, that's just saying, sorry. Yeah, I saw that. No, I mean, we're saying, in general, we're condemning any terrorist act anywhere, ever. And I, I don't think we can exclude that out.
Okay, I want to confirm that. And then on the second page, second line down, you have "and specifically the terrorist actions of Hamas." You want to remove terrorists and just say the actions of?
Then, so is the maker of the motion and the second are okay with those additional changes?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and conduct the roll call. Councilmember LeBaron.
Councilmember LeBaron, I want to point out something. That that woman right there, Raquel Vazquez, is running for seventy-nineth Assembly District. And she's also probably going to be running against this woman here, Ms. Allison Snow, for mayor. So what you guys all just witnessed here was total political theater. So she does not want this to pass, because then this is going to be a victory for this woman right here, or perceived as a victory for this woman, which is going to make her look good when she runs for mayor. I'm just calling this out so that all of you guys note that, okay? So that attempt to block this is that. It's very, so self-benefit. It's self-benefit. And then the mayor here wants to say, focus should be on city goals, let's focus on the storm drain. Yet, just about an hour ago, I was asking that we agenda storm drains, because yes, there are a lot of people in Lemon Grove who are being impacted by failed infrastructure. And there was crickets coming from the mayor at that point. How odd. Let's focus on storm drains, let's focus, our duty, our main duty should be on the urgent needs of our city? That's impressive. Yeah, so you've mentioned that now. Why? Because you don't want Allison to look good when this passes, or if this passes? I see people saying shame on you from the audience. My vote is yes, supportive of this.
Councilmember Castillo. Councilmember Snow.
I'm really grateful for the opportunity for this resolution to help for everybody who's taken the time to come out here and share their stories with us. Thank you for standing for humanity. I am so proud to be able to vote yes on this. It's not political theater, this is reality, this is what needs to happen now. It needed to happen yesterday, it needed to happen five months ago. And I'm glad that we're able to do this now and together. And we're not fighting. Raquel is offering good debate, and she has her side. And we all, we come together, we bring different ideas to the table. That's the value in this process. And it's like, you support one another up here. And so I'm grateful for this opportunity. And yes, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can help our streets, and we can help the streets in Casa, too.
Mayor Proton Mendoza?
Yes.
Your best guess?
I refuse to play politics at the platform. And so I will abstain from this vote. Thank you.
Promotion carries on a roll of three eyes, one absent and one.